Our May 13th, Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting in this session. If you all would please stand, members and guests, please stand as we say our pledge. I'd like to call on Chaplain Gooch, Commissioner Gooch, if you'll come forward and then lead us in pledge to the American flag and to the salute to the flag of Tennessee.
Father, we know that there are people in our midst and others out there who have their own private, personal struggles. They may have a private demon. They may have struggling health issues or financial issues, and we don't know who they are, but you do. So we would ask that you bless them and give them peace and give them comfort and give them someone in their lives that can help them find solutions to whatever is troubling them. And Father, over the last week, we have seen a rain of terror fall down upon your chosen people. And Father, we would ask that you would protect them and that you would make them victorious. And please don't let them think that we over here have forsaken them because many of us haven't. And for always, Father, we thank you and praise you for Jesus Christ, your Son, who is the very author of love, peace, joy, redemption, grace, and even salvation. And it's through his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on the field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Y'all may be seated. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome everyone to our county commission meeting. It's been a beautiful day. I'd like to say thank you for attending, our guests and presenters tonight. It should go much faster. Having trouble with the flag. Should go much faster because we have now been released of Governor Lee's Executive Order 16, so we don't have to call the roll person by person. So I know Ms. Lisa's very happy about that, and that should shave off probably 30 minutes of our meeting. So at this point in time, I'll call on Madam Clark. If you would, please call the roll.
Mr. Virgil Gammon. I mean, David Gammon.
Here.
Mr. Stuart Piercy.
Here.
Mr. Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mr. Gurley.
Yes.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Mr. Key.
Here.
Mr. Gooch.
Here.
Mr. Sereno.
Yeah.
Twenty present. We have a quorum.
We've detected a quorum. We can now conduct our business. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips for approval of the minutes. Commissioner Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Kettering. The minutes that you have before you have been adjusted. I find those minutes to be in order and move that we dispense with the reading and that be adopted as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now it's time for our public comments. We have two that have signed up to speak tonight. We ask that you come forward and give your name and your address. Please keep your minutes to three minutes. First, we have Mr. Philip Hearn. He's coming to talk tonight about rezoning. Mr. Hearn, you're recognized in the well.
My name is Philip Hearn. I live in the 5,000 block of Old Nashville Highway. I'm here to talk with you this evening about three pieces of property that you've all approved for commercial use in my 5,000 block. We're picking up a lot of traffic from it. I expected that. The way I want to talk, though, is how you got the case delivered to you. I've got an issue with the 500 feet. That picked up about six people in a neighborhood of over 125 families. Those folks don't have any idea of what's coming or what you've approved, what you've talked about. Several of you, I think, here are in different committees that I've already talked to about this. I just sort of want you to look at that. That may be a standard situation for y'all, but it doesn't seem real fair. It seemed like a lot of good advice, a lot of good people out there that deserve to be heard, and they probably want to be heard, but they're not getting the word out there to them, but they deserve it. But I just want you to take some time, think about that. There's another piece of property in my area coming up towards you here soon in a real rough situation with that neighborhood. So just sort of want to take the time, let you maybe think about that 500 feet as you all get together and see if that standard is fair enough to keep going with that. Thanks for your time. See you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Next, we have on the calendar is Mr. Darren Gore. He would like to speak on the Republic landfill. Mr. Gore, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. My name is Darren Gore. I live at 2922 Chateau Court in Indian Hills subdivision. So I'd like to speak on the topic of Republic's Middle Point landfill expansion. And I'm going to start off with a little scripture from Matthew and Luke that tells us that whoever is faithful with very little will be faithful with much, or whoever has been responsible in a few things will be responsible with many things. So we all know that Republic has for many, many years been in charge of managing and bearing a lot of trash inside Rutherford County. So the question has to be asked, have they performed responsibly? Should they be put in charge of more? Have they properly managed traffic into the facility? Have they properly managed the volume of trash coming into Middle Point? Have they properly managed covering the trash with soil? Have they effectively extracted and scrubbed the gases that cause such foul and noxious odors in their neighborhood or to their neighbors? I think most of you would know or have an opinion on their past performance. Per their comments last night, that's just the past. You need to trust that they will be a future, better performer, that increasing the landfill by 80 -- well, they told us that the odor would be eliminated by July, and that increasing the size of landfill by 80% was always part of the plan, but it doesn't mean that they're going to conduct business as usual, that they're going to be better partners and neighbors. The city of Murfreesboro is at the show me or prove it stage. I can say that we categorically reject allowing Middle Point landfill to conduct business as usual for the next 30 years as they have the past 30 years. So we oppose a landfill expansion under its current management modus operandi, and I recommend the county take the same stance. At a minimum, I suggest the county mandate best management practices to protect the community against Republic's likely mismanagement of the landfill moving forward. Require a minimum turnaround time for vehicles to dump their trash loads. Currently, it takes two hours. Make it 45 minutes. Require necessary road improvements and sinking funds for future traffic improvements. Require that soil be used for daily cover and make Republic demonstrate where that soil is going to be coming from to support an 82.5% expansion. And finally, require them to eliminate the odor. Make them demonstrate that they are installing significantly more gas extraction wells than the minimum required. And finally, maybe even require their management team to buy homes in North Murfreesboro. So thanks for your time in taking on this very, very tough issue. It's very critical to our community, and I appreciate you all so much for trying to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Appreciate you coming tonight. At this point in time, I'd like to call on -- we are on Item G, Elections and Confirmations. Commissioner Reed, if you'd please come forward at this point in time, and you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations. Item 1 deals with the election of our notaries. Commissioners, listing of notaries may be found on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Phillips. I'm recognized. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2, Steering would like to confirm Jessica Schofield, appointed for Judicial Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Sereno and Commissioner Harris.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 3, Steering would like to announce three vacancies for the CCRC Board. Greg Lyles, Doug Botery, and Annie Ruth Ustleton, whose terms are expired July 2021. Item 4, Steering wishes to announce an insurance committee vacancy for County Employee Representative. Alan Farley's term is to expire July 2021. And, Mr. Chairman, I wish to announce two vacancies for the Industrial Development Board and the Health Education and Facilities Board, Edwin Davenport and Tara McDougall, whose terms are expired August 2021. Mr. Chairman, this concludes all the business, elections, and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Told you to go faster. It brings us down to Item H, Resolution Approval of the Consent Agenda. Chairman Pro Tem Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Kettering. I've reviewed the items presented for our consent agenda. I find all of them to be appropriate, and without exception, I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
I have a motion. We have a second from Commissioner P. and Commissioner Johnson. Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Vote.
On the board. You'll need to cast your vote. Sorry, I was trying to go too fast. All members, please cast your vote. For our new members, you'll see the little -- see the little -- looks like a cellphone. So if you -- all members, cast your vote. At twenty yes, motion passes. We have no unfinished business at this time. We've still got 15 minutes, so we're going to roll on into before the public hearing, which is publicized for 6:30. We'll get as far as we can before we have to come back in 15 minutes, but at this point in time, we'll go move on to Item K of our standing committees, Reports for Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Chairman P., you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Been a while since I've used this little iPad, so ease to that again. Okay, our first resolution, Resolution K1A, has to do with the unexpected occurrence over at the Holloway High School gym where their HVAC unit went out. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Educational Capital Projects Fund be amended as follows. Increase expenditures of $60,000 and a decrease in committed fund balance of $60,000, resolved this 13th day of May 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner McAdoo, any questions or objections? Seeing none, all members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. Twenty yes.
At twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, our next item is Item K1B1. And actually, there are two parts to this. First is a resolution that was passed by our school board, and the second is actually our resolution. The first one also names us as part of the resolution, so I'm going to go ahead and read both of these prior to us voting. And what this has to do with is the federal money that we're getting from the schools because of the COVID problems that we've had, there's a cash flow problem, and the only way we're going to be able to do that is to allow them to take this money. We've looked at this at Budget and Public -- I mean, our Board of Education Committee. I'll spit it out here in a second. At any rate, I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas federal project grants operate on a reimbursement basis and funds are required from the state of Tennessee by Rutherford County School Systems after the authorization authorized purchases have been made. Whereas in a previous year, the Rutherford County Board of Education and Rutherford County Commission approved a transfer of $1 million of local funds from the General Purpose School Fund to the Federal Project Fund to prevent a cash deficit at various times due to slow turnaround time for reimbursements from the state of Tennessee. Whereas the Rutherford County Schools has been approved for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, E S S E R 2, federal funding for over $19 million, and will be applying for additional federal funds from the S R 2 grant program. With these grant funds being drawn down in the Rutherford County Schools Federal Project Fund, whereas adequate cash flow for the S R 2 and the S R 3 projects will be needed to ensure the timely payments of vendors and the Rutherford County School System does not desire to operate any fund with a cash deficit. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Education in its regularly called meeting on the fourth day of May 2021 that Section 1, the General Purpose School Fund shall transfer $1 million to the School Federal Projects Fund upon approval by the Rutherford County Board of Education and the Rutherford County Commission. Section 2, the $1 million transfer shall remain in the Federal Projects Fund as committed for education fund balance from the General Purpose School Fund and may be repaid at any time as noted in a resolution passed by the Rutherford County Board of Education and County Commission. Section 3, the resolution will take place upon passage by both the Rutherford County Board of Education and the Rutherford County Commission, adopted this fourth day of May 2021 by the Rutherford County Board of Education, and to be adopted May 13, 2021 by the Rutherford County Commission. Now I'm going to flip over to our resolution, which is what we're normally seeing. This is Item K1B2. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Purpose School Fund be amended as follows. To transfer funds to the Federal Project Fund for cash flow while administering the elementary and secondary school emergency relief grants. An increase expenditures transferred to others of $1 million and a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $1 million, resolved this 13th day of May 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion by the chairman. I have a second from Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Blair. Any objection? Any questions? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Next item.
All right, the next item is Item K1C. This has to do with the insurance changes coming up. Wherefore, in an effort to generate sufficient revenue to cover the claims costs in the Employee Insurance Fund, recommendations were presented for consideration as the health, dental, and vision insurance premium rates for active employees effective January 1, 2022, and whereas a medical plan changes were also presented for consideration in an effort to control cost of the medical plans. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the premium schedules and medical plan changes attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim be adopted as the health, dental, and vision insurance premium rates and medical plan changes for active employees effective January 1, 2022, resolved this 13th day of May 2021. And, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Chairman makes a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Commissioner Allen.
Chairman.
Any questions?
I would like to make a statement if that's all right.
You go ahead and make a statement, and then I'll call on Commissioner Gammon.
And I think you have this in your -- on your iPad, but Mercer 2022 Medical Insurance Recommendations. I wanted to run through those real quick. That's eliminating the HRA medical plan at the end of this year for 2021, and this implements a high deductible HSA plan, January 1, 2022. And we've got some notes under that. That default HRA members to the HSA plan and a minus 1% rate increase compared to the HRA. Employer contributions of $500 for singles and $1,000 for families. Employer contribution distributions applied accordingly to the deduction schedule, and employee family coinsurance will be 20%. And below that, 7% rate increase for the deductible plan, a 10% rate increase for the coplay plan. Implement local plus network in all plans. Increase deductibles out of pockets exhibited in the proposed plan design. No increase to the Freedom Plan, the stifle for retirees. Rate pass for post-65 retirees' medical plans, and a rate pass for dental plans, and a rate pass for vision plans. And the thing that I wanted to mention is, this is separate from what we saw at Budget the other night. This is for active employees, and we'll see another one in just a minute for the retirees. And if you have any questions about this, I'm going to refer to Mr. Elam, so we'll make a motion to get him up here if you've got plans and questions I can't answer.
Okay. Commissioner Gammon, you're recognized.
I may be out of character at this point, but that's one of the things I was going to ask about is, I'm 65 now, so I've got Medicare. Dental and vision doesn't really affect me. My wife has state insurance. But if I heard what I thought you said, my concern is especially pre-65, post-65, I just want to tack it on a certain level to start with. You've got to kind of walk these things through. But I know that pre-65 now does not have vision or dental insurance, and I'd like to see us look at that and do an actuary or something, see what the cost is. You know, Ms. Nolan can look at that. But I don't see that it would be that much cost always, because I mean, all the years we've done dental, it's a small cost really when you get in there. But I think if you retire 20 or 30 years, or maybe even longer, that our employees have earned a little bit more to get that, and maybe that's where you're going. I'm sorry, but I just, I've always been a opponent for at least start with pre-65 to give some kind of benefits to them when they retire. I have had constituents tell me that that was a problem for them that were retirees, but I'd have to refer that back to our insurance committee. I think Commissioner McAdoo, aren't you on that committee, and also Commissioner Allen? But Ed, if you want to answer this.
Commissioner Allen.
I'm happy to let Lisa or Ed correct me, but I believe the vision and dental are both voluntary participation. The county doesn't pay any portion of that. The employees only pay it, so I don't know what it would do actuarially to affect the premium to allow them to opt into it, but it would be no additional cost for the county.
It is offered. It's just that the employees have to pay it if they opt in to take dental or vision, but it is offered to them.
It's not offered to retirees.
Not offered to retirees, but pre-65 it is. But it's a minimal cost. It's very inexpensive.
No, not to retirees, whether it's pre or post.
Sorry?
Regardless of whether it's pre or post, it's not offered to retirees, pre or post 65.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I said that. I guess I did.
Okay.
That may be something that you want to address with the insurance committee, Commissioner. That's what I would suggest.
Commissioner Gertie.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like that with the health insurance increases, whatever we give employees in terms of a pay raise, we're pretty well going to wipe out. That's just an observation.
Let me make a statement. When we first started out with the departments, we told each one of the departments, Lisa and I did, to come back with their budget, build in their budgets, and we had 10% built into their budget. We continued to work with the companies, with Mr. Elam, trying to really refine it and get it down because our cost, just with COVID, we had just one patient went well over $800,000. The pricing for hospitalization major medical has truly increased. You can tell by, like everything else, but healthcare was one of the first ones affected because of the pandemic. So our rates were high. We had -- our claims were adversely affected, so what we have settled on, the insurance committee came back, were the 3.6% increase for the employees. We have a very rich plan and always have had in Rutherford County, but in order to keep the pricing down, we had to narrow the benefits somewhat and go to a skinnier network, if you will. You can still go to an ACA hospital, but the prices may be a little bit higher as opposed to going to St. Thomas, and the majority of our employees go to St. Thomas here, but if you go to Nashville and it's outside the market or the network, then it's going to be a little bit higher. But I believe Vanderbilt, Rhonda and Vanderbilt inside the -- St. Thomas Vanderbilt's inside the network. If you have any questions, we could go into recess if anybody has any questions on that, but this is going to be quite an uplift for all of our employees in looking and participating in this year to make the decisions for themselves because they've got more skin in the game from what they have had in the past. It's going to be a huge burden on our insurance department and risk management department and educational process. We're going to try to advertise as much as we possibly can through our RCTV, through our website, mailings, everything else to our county employees as we change our benefits this year. We're still staying with Cigna, but there are changes, and they need to be aware of Any further questions? If you get down in the weeds too much, we'll get Mr. Elam. We'll go into recess and have him come up. Any further questions? I have a motion.
I'm sorry. I thought I made that motion resolved.
He did make a motion?
Yeah.
All right. I have a second. And Commissioner Allen's on the second. Any further questions concerning the medical plan?
Okay. Want to declare Rule 10 now?
I'm sorry?
Rule 10. Okay. K1D.
You're declaring a Rule 10? All right, thank you.
One thing I want to mention, Commissioner Sereno, is if you're speaking Rule 10 as a retiree, you can vote on this. This is for active only. The next one will be for retirees, so you're -- I mean, it's up to you. I don't know your situation, but just to be clear.
Commissioner Dodd.
I'm declaring Rule 10.
Rule 10 by Commissioner Gammon.
David Gammon.
David Gammon. Any further questions? Seeing none. All members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. 19 yes, 1 abstain.
Motion passes. Commissioner P.
Okay. Item K1D, as I mentioned, this is actually the same resolution, only this is directed for our retirees.
Chairman. It's 631.
630. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for keeping us on time. We'll pause our agenda. Now we'll move into our, it's time for our public hearing. We'll call on Mr. Demasi. Mr. Demasi, you are recognized for our public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. We only have one rezoning request for your consideration tonight. This is for property located along Epps Mill Road. The property is currently zoned residential medium density, or RM, and the proposed zoning is EAC, Employment and Activity Center. The applicant would like to use a portion of this property for a heavy equipment rental shop. There is a concept plan included with your agenda materials that you can find on your iPad. You'll see that the plan does show proposed building locations, parking areas, et cetera. A portion of the site has also been reserved for future expansion, but the remaining property may be sold at some point in the future. You'll also see on the concept plan a future possible sanitary sewer connection. However, that would have to be approved through the city of Murfreesboro. That's not something that the applicant is pursuing at this point. It's just shown there for display purposes more than anything. Access would continue to be along Epps Mill Road. The applicant's concept plan does show, again, the parking area with potential expansion. Number of required parking spots, parking lot designs, access, et cetera, would all be determined by the requirements of the zoning ordinance should this application be approved. Now, traffic study has been performed at this time since there's not a defined use like a planned development, and the use could change, but staff does have the ability through the zoning ordinance to request one if we did feel that one was warranted. Properties located in the EAC, again, Employment Activity Center District, are generally required to provide a type 2 buffer adjacent to a residentially zoned property. The EAC is more of a mixed-use zone. It does allow for commercial and some light industrial uses which could require a type 3 buffer, but again, that's something we would verify at the site plan stage, and a, excuse me, a landscape plan would have to be submitted, and performance standards would also apply. Most of the comments from the planning commission concerned the traffic along Epps Mill Road. It was agreed that the proposed use that the applicant is stating would be a good fit as there wasn't going to be much traffic associated with that. We did explain again that it, the use did change, or we felt that a traffic study would be required, that we could do that just through the zoning ordinance. After some discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval of this request by a unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Demasi? Any questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve this, please.
Have a motion for approval. And it's, yeah, we've got to do the public hearing first. Yeah, we'll move into the public hearing first, so I'll call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold our public hearing request. Public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue? If you would, please come forward. Give us your name, your address, if you're for or against the proposed request. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
I am for this request. My name is Andrew Semerri. I am of Huddleson Steel Engineering and representing the client of the development. The impact of the traffic in the area is going to be very miniscule as there will be vehicles leaving the site one to two times a day per mainly the employees of the site. As Doug discussed, we are requesting an EAC zoning, and we do not at the moment plan to connect to City Sover, but it is potential that it could happen if it needs to, as we do have access to an existing septic system that we would be able to utilize with the septic fields. As far as the development goes with the overall traffic impact, we're expecting maybe 95% to 99% of the traffic is going to be exiting and leaving the site and using, utilizing I-24 and not so much Manchester Pike. That should cover everything, unless anybody has any other questions that they'd like to have answered.
Okay.
Andrew Semerri. S-I-N-E-R-I.
Does that conclude your remarks? Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else speak for or against this rezoning? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and Rutherford County Commission is back in session. I'll call on Commissioner Buchanan.
I would like to make a motion to approve, please.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second from Commissioner Cook. Any other questions? Any discussion? Without objection, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry.
Can I make an announcement?
You can make an announcement. Yes, sir. You've got a ham breakfast or what?
No, not quite. Yeah, ham breakfast at my house. No. No, just, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me this, just a quick moment here. An email went out to all the Commissioners about a week and a half ago or so, I guess, regarding the survey for our comprehensive plan process that we've recently started. Quite a few responses have been already submitted, but I just want to make a quick reminder. If you haven't already done it, just take a few minutes to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Okay. I'll, we'll go back into our agenda, call on Chairman P, come back up, and we'll continue where we left off. Commissioner P. I believe we're on medical insurance for retirees. Is that correct?
That's correct. Item K1D, and I'll go ahead and read that resolution. Whereas, in an effort to generate sufficient revenue to cover the claims cost in the employee insurance fund, recommendations were presented for consideration as the health insurance premium rates for retirees effective January 1st, 2022. And whereas medical plan changes were also presented for consideration in an effort to control costs of the medical plans. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the premium schedules and medical plan changes attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim be adopted as the health insurance premium rates and medical plan changes for retirees effective January 1st, 2022, resolved this 13th day of May, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion by the chairman. Is there a second? Have a second. Commissioner Allen. It's open for discussion. Master Johnson.
As a candidate retiree, I must invoke Rule 10.
Commissioner Johnson declares Rule 10. Commissioner Virgil Gammon, you're recognized.
Rule 10.
Rule 10. Commissioner Gammon.
Mr. Chairman, my, my wife is a retiree, and I'm going to refrain from voting.
You said she is a retiring. You declared Rule 10.
Rule 10, then.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. Without objection, we're on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. 19 yes, 1 abstain.
Motion passes. Chairman.
Okay. We've only got two items left, so we're clicking them off. This has to do with the Airport Authority and the funding that we've talked about. Item K1E, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $6,300,000 of general obligation bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee. Be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the county, that the purpose of providing funds, I, to make a loan to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, and the future will be called the Airport Authority, for the purpose of financing, A, construction improvements, extension and equipment of the airport, B, payment of legal, fiscal, administrative, architectural, and engineering costs incident to the foregoing, payment, C, payment of capitalized interest during construction of the foregoing project for up to six months thereafter, and D, acquisition of all property, real and personal, apparent thereto or in connection therewith, and refinancing of prior notes for the Airport Authority issued for the foregoing by conversion of notes to bonds, I, reimbursements of appropriate fund to the county for prior expenditures for the foregoing costs if applicable, including refinancing of interfund notes, the processes of which were used for the foregoing cost by conversion of notes to bonds, and to pay cost incident to the insurance and sale of bonds authorized herein. There shall be issued bonds in one or more series of said county in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6,300,000, which bonds may be issued on a federal taxable basis and shall bear interest at a rate or rates not to exceed the maximum rate permitted by applicable Tennessee law at the time of issuance of the bonds, or any series thereof, and which shall be payable from unlimited ad valorem taxes to be levied on all taxable properties within the county. Be it therefore resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the county clerk be and is hereby directed and instructed to cause the foregoing initial resolution relative to the issuance of not to exceed $6,300,000 general obligation bonds to be published full in a newspaper having a general circulation in the county for one issue of said paper followed by the statutory notice to wit. And notice, the foregoing resolution has been adopted. Unless within 20 days from the date of publication hereof, a petition signed by at least 10% of the registered voters of the county shall have to be filed with the county clerk protesting the issuance of the bonds, such bonds will be issued as proposed. Lisa Duke crowled the county clerk. Thereupon, the county mayor declared said resolution to have been duly and regularly adopted, and said resolution was signed and approved by the county mayor and county clerk upon an open meeting. And I believe that's got everything we need to read on this one. Thank goodness. Moved this 13th day of May, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Got a motion by, got a motion by the chairman, and, and, gosh, I saw hands everywhere. Commissioner Blair and Phillips and everybody. I'll just make a comment that this is a great project. Of course, we partner with, with Smyrna, but it's an extension of the, of the taxiway and building a large hangar that will accommodate several aircraft, but it just goes to show the, the need of, of this airport. It's such a valuable tool. It's a, it's really a gem in the rough for us and a big economic engine in the northern end of the county of what it's doing. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to participate with them on that. Any other discussion or questions?
Seeing none. Without objection, you're on the board. Call the row. Cast your vote. Sorry.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Motion passes. Chairman.
Okay. Our last item, item K1F, and this is actually to pay for solid waste fund amendments where we're looking at engineering services for Rockvale, Leanna, Wickley Lane, and Walter Hill Convenience Centers. Increase expenditures for engineering $196,250 with a decrease in expenditures of a signed fund balance of $196,250, resolved this 13th day of May, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion by the chairman. Is there a second? Commissioner Piercey on the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. You'll be on the board. Please cast your vote, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. 20 yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes this.
Thank you, Chairman. Next members, we're at item 2, Health Education Report. No report. Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
I know, Commissioners, it makes you nervous when I come up here with a notebook in my hand. And especially when you see me grab a pointer like this, 15 miles from home and a PowerPoint, that makes me an expert, I think is what, what they all say. But this evening, I want to discuss something with you, and it's something that I wanted to bring to your attention because of the fact that information is being brought out across the county, that I think we're getting mixed signals, we're getting misinformation. And I think it's important that you, as a commission, need to know exactly what's being talked about in your different committees, and especially in the public safety. I'm very fortunate to have a, a public safety committee like I do. I think we have, you know, when you, when you're a chairman of a committee, I know all the chairmen feel the same way. You've got the best committee up here. But I have to say with my committee, I think they're the best committee up here, because when we meet, we'll stay here sometimes up to two to three hours going over the different departments and what we do, and they take it very seriously, somewhat like I think I do. When I showed up here on the scene back in 2014, public safety was one of the things I really wanted to work with. I thought that was vital. I thought it was important, especially from the area that I come from. And I went to, even to the extreme of becoming a part of the Sheriff's Citizen Academy to learn a little bit more about what's happening in this county. And I still urge that to each and every commissioner up here. If you haven't gone through that academy, I urge you to do so, because you learn so much more about this county. You learn so much more about what's out there and happening. I mean, I went through the whole things, even trying to find out how to do an arrest. They finally pulled me off of that because they said, you're not going to work in that area for sure. Aiding in the jail, seeing everything in particular, what's invited, and that's vital as far as public safety is concerned. I've taken it seriously. I've looked at everything we've done from EMS to our firefighters, and I see what is happening within this county as we continue to grow. Everybody hears growth, and the discussion that we're hearing across this county, we do have it, and it affects everything that we do. We tonight have done some different things within our budgets. We've done some things and things. We've proved every time we come up here, we're doing something with education, and it continues to come at us. We have mandates that come out of the state that require us to continually, continually, continually build schools, build schools. Public safety has no mandates as such that we are required to continually build things for.
for public safety within this county. But when I take a look at it and see the citizens of this county and what they have to deal with and what we have to deal with as a county commission, and what the different departments have to work with out there, we have a lot of creativity. And when I say creativity within these different departments, they're very creative in what they have to work with and how they do it. One example of that is what we did back in during the pandemic. I'll never forget being here in this very room. I was at March 16th, I believe, of last year, when that was called as an emergency, and we were all called into this room, and we had to sit down here and make our initial plan. We didn't even know what that plan was, we didn't even know what we were facing. But we went out there and did our jobs. We did our jobs as not only as commissioners, but we had our different individuals who were responsible for our different departments to go out there and do that and work with the information that they had. I'll never forget that day when we walked out of here. I walked out of here with Commissioner Harris and myself and our county attorney, and we walked right out here in front of this courthouse talking about the different things and where we would be in the next few months, how this county would be affected. And I'll never forget this, and I know you won't, County Attorney, because as we stood there, we were talking about the percentages we had heard of how that virus was going to affect us and how age would affect us. And he stood there and he looked at Commissioner Harris and he looked at me, and he said, you know, of the three of us right here, one of us probably will not be here at the end of this virus. And for some reason, those two looked at me. But I want y'all to understand something. I'm a, I'm a glass half-full, not a half-empty. And I told him, I'll be here to see you. And I gave him a Christmas card this year, and he said, from the man that's still here. And I'm still here. And I want you to understand, I didn't Zoom very much either because I wasn't all that big and wanting to do that. But I want you to know that our departments were out there too. There are departments that have the glass that's half-full and what they had to do, and they improvised with the information that they had. And what I'm presenting to you tonight is another situation I think we are looking at in public safety, we need to look at as the glass half-full, and what we're needing to do to go forward within a county that now is not only facing the leftovers from the pan epidemic, but maybe another pan epidemic or what else we've got to do, but the growth that we're having out there. This evening, as I come into this meeting right here, there's a new sign just right beside the Rockvale High School. 68 more acres for sale, up for development, right there beside those schools in the county section. So county areas right now are doing just like the city. They are developing. They're building houses, they're looking just like our cities coming out that way. And what we have to do as a county commission, not only are we having to provide schools for the children, we're going to have to provide these services for the people out there. We've got to provide the fire service, we've got to provide the ambulance service, we've got to provide the sheriff's department for these people out there. We're no longer the county we used to be. We're no longer can operate with just coming out of the city right here to go out to the county and help those people out there. It's a whole new day we're having to do with, and we've come out with, I think, of a pretty good plan, and it was a plan that was developed over creation, I guess is what you would say. It expanded from a study that was made several years ago about where fire stations are needed within Rutherford County. In other word, in other words, where response is required, where we're having the most activity involved. The number one area where we were needing something, where we didn't have something already, was out in the Rockvale area. So we started looking out there to begin with. Well, we tried to find, started looking for some places there, and we even had an individual who was willing to give us land out there to build a station on. Well, I'm not ashamed of it, but I know for a fact where I live, we have at least one dirt to every two rock. And finding the exact spot of where you wanted to build the building was tough, and we found two good places where we thought we had a place for a fire station out there that was going to be given to us. Couldn't find the proper place that had the soils to, to use it.
They call it Rockvale, right?
Do what?
That's why they call it Rockvale.
That's right, it's called Rockvale. And that's exactly what the problem was, we could not build out there. So as we went further, we found another place, and it happened to be with on the school property there at the elementary school. So we were looking at that at the time, and we thought maybe we could develop from there. And we had these other places that were suggested within that study that come through the University of Tennessee and TDEC. So as we looked at those, we, we kept looking at, okay, how do you do this? How do you pay for them? How do you get these going? How do you develop what a fire station needs to look like and what else are we needing? And then all of a sudden, something possible come up a little bit later. We had the opportunity to apply for a different grant that might, would pay for these stations and what we wanted to do. But what it did, it caused us to think outside of the box, made us think outside of what else could we do as far as a county to provide even more than just a fire station. To apply for a brick grant, we had to come up with the best idea. Not only the best idea in the county, the best idea in the state of Tennessee, but the best idea in the country for the brick grant. So it made us think a whole lot of what we wanted these stations to do and what we decided to do. We're not building fire stations, we're building public safety buildings. And what these would be, buildings that would be important to the entire community. They would not only have a place for the fire station, they would also be a place for the ambulance service. And then there'd also be an office for the sheriff's department, for a deputy to be able to pull in, to work his records, to make a stop, to eat his supper or whatever. But yet he'd also be in communication, where these stations would be also a place, a public safety building, would have communications within them. And then we also thought a little bit further outside of the box. I don't know if you remember the tornado that, that hit Putnam County at the same time, back in March of last year. They were caught in situations where they couldn't communicate. They were caught in situations of how do you get the fire department, how do you get the ambulances up there and whatever? We got thinking about, okay, wonder if we made these public safety buildings a source where they would be tornado-proof and safe. So we put a tornado room in there, a safe room for a day room as well as for the staff to stay. We also would put tornado sirens on these public safety buildings. We also did a lot of other different creative ideas with them. So we created these buildings for this grant. And what we come up with is that we had, I think, probably one of the best ideas that you would want to do, and that's what I'm going to show you tonight, is these public safety buildings. We come up with five different buildings within the county where we wanted to place these buildings, and we hoped the brick grant would cover these, where we could pay for them and get ready to go and place them out there to take care of the situation we're talking about. And the five places that we would want to put those is that we'd put one at the Rockvale site, we'd put one at the Kittrelle site, we'd put one at a Christiana site, we'd put one also at the Walter Hill site, and we'd put one out at Amville. And if you'll look at that and think about that, how that looks within the county, that's what Rutherford County looks like. I don't know if you've ever looked at it, and it looks pretty much like your hand. But when you take that, and that site right there, it's somewhat like a spider web, and the way these stations are right there, that's the way they would operate, just on the edge of the city of Murfreesboro, where these stations not only would take care of the rural area of Rutherford County, they also would be on that edge of Murfreesboro for those ambulances to operate out of those stations where the people living on the edge of Murfreesboro, that sounds sort of strange, on the edge of Murfreesboro, but those ambulances could get to them faster or respond a little bit faster due to the fact they're not coming through the traffic. You know, we've had a great plan where we're placing those already on satellite out there, but this would give them already in a station where they're getting to the city of Murfreesboro and coming that away. So we would place them like that. So we're working for the county, we're also working for the citizens of the city of Murfreesboro within our setups and what we're wanting to do with those. But just so happened, as we planned those five, we found out there was another need, and it come through our commissioner over here from the Last Cassis area. We found out really there's a strong need for another one of these stations up in the Last Cassis area, when you take a look at the northeast section up there going towards Milton. There's a definite need in that area that affects that area up there that also hits Commissioner Pease's area back that way too. So we also placed within that another station, which we're talking about six now, out towards the Last Cassis area, which works very well in the whole system and what we're talking about right here, which is possibly one of the best plans you've ever seen as far as something to materialize and evolve over starting with one station, one station we couldn't get anywhere due to the fact of finding a site. And the other thing that's really working good for these as far as cost is concerned is that location of property. Now, you know, when we're trying to build a school, that's the number one thing we're out there looking for. Where are you going to build these things? Because of the cost. Every one of these will be placed on a piece of property that belongs to the county already. So we're not out here looking for new property, we're only looking to build the buildings themselves. Now, I know every one of you are sitting out there, well, what's this going to cost? These things or something else? Well, let me first, let's just go through and take a look at them. Let's see what, let's see what this new car is going to look like before we start driving it. This right here happens to be the site of the Kittrelle. We've already done some site work and, or surveying and things of this type, we've already done the drawings. One thing I'll tell you is all six of them will look exactly alike. In other words, if you walk in the front door of the one at Kittrelle, the one at Rockvale, the one at Last Cassis, the one at, wherever you may walk in, they all look alike. So we're not changing anything. That saves in the cost, that saves in the architectural cost, everything is the same. There we go. The only difference is possibly you may see a little change in the, the color of some of the things. When you go out, you can see some of the tile and things that will be used in some of these stations. They put a orange tile up there to be used in these stations. I told them that would not be in the Rockvale station. We'll not put orange in there, they're going to replace that with blue for sure. But this is the Kittrelle station you see there. The Rockvale station, as you notice, is pretty much the same. The only difference is what it has to work with as far as the, the area around it, such as the parking. The interior, you have this same thing, you have one laying on your desk to look at. Here we have the different front and back. That gives you some idea of what it really will look like. This is the back of it. Now, we went out there today and got a picture of this so y'all could really see what one looks like. But we've got some great guys that, that did some work for us to give you some idea if you were driving by these stations and to see exactly what they are going to look We think they fit very well with the homes in the area. They're not something that would really take away from the area they're from. In fact, they'll work real good with the schools that they're going to be located from, and that's another plus for us, is how they are located with our school systems. They'll be located there for them to use. Now, I mentioned the Rockvale site, that one out there. We already have at the Rockvale High School a class there where they are taught to become EMS individuals, where they've become paramedics, EMTs. So it's the beginning part of that. We're hoping that that class there can come across the road and do some training there at that station. And I just think that's a, is the perfect place to do that. They have that same opportunity to do that and, and do, do that situation. So this gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're talking about in these stations. The total cost on those stations, we can build, you know, we were up here last month, and I believe the schools come in here with three additions to, they're going to do some additions to, to I think, Rockvale Elementary, Rockvale Middle School, and I think Smyrna Elementary, is that middle school? $31 million, I think, was what that cost. We can build all six of these for 28 million. All six of them will cost 28 million. So that's a pretty good, pretty good bargain, I think, when we're talking about something we haven't built in Rutherford County in how many years? I think the last was what we had built out at Barfield, was probably the last station that we've ever built. So it's pretty good. Within these stations right here, you're looking at a community location, you're looking at storm protection. In fact, these will each have a tornado shelter withstand an L4 tornado up to 250 mile per hour. They'll each contain a tornado sirene out in the rural areas, which we do not have right now. They'll contain a community pantry upon the mezzanine area that can be used through the community. And let me tell you something else about this mezzanine that comes from our pan epidemic. We would have the availability that if we were back in a situation like we were prior during the COVID situation, when we got ready to vaccinate, we could use these stations as a source to go out and vaccinate. In other words, the people in the rural areas could come to these stations, and we could have health department individuals giving vaccinations at those stations. They would immediately become something that we could use to fight panemics out in the rural area without them having to come all the way into Murfreesboro to do. So that makes it another source for something for the health area. I mean, we would have, we've got ambulance, EMTs already in those stations, they could be giving those vaccinations in there. I'm just saying that if these stations had already been in place back during the pan epidemic, we could really have saved on the stress on a lot of our employees because they would already been closer to some of the problems we had. It could already have been something we could have already been using to fight the situation we have here in this county. And I think that's vital and that's important in what we're trying to do and what we want to do. It's important that I think, that I bring this to you so you understand what we're talking about and what we're doing. This was originally brought up in public safety. We mentioned the fact that we had wanted to do five of these buildings. In fact, it was sent to budget about doing this, and at that time, we were talking about using the, some of you probably remember getting this in the mail. I think some of you said you've already tossed it in the trash, but when I saw it, I thought I wanted to be sure and keep that, which dealt with the American Rescue Plan. And you know what caught my attention immediately told us how much in Rutherford County we got in that plan, over $64 million. But we looked at that and we wondered, is it possible that we could use part of that funding to fund these buildings? And we sent that to budget with the possibility of using some of that funding to fund these buildings. We, we have looked at that, we're continually sending information out, trying to find out exactly if we can use this funding for this. I've read it, the mayor's read it. Of course, as I try to explain to people, the mayor and myself both have this half-full glass theory in everything we do, and we keep reading into it, we can do it. I know, but we have other people who try to fix us like balloons and pull us down when we try to get right. I know finance has told us, no, there's some squishy parts in it. Of course, I come from the farm and I'm used to walking through squishy, and I've dealt with the federal government, so I can walk with squishy all the time. And we are still looking, we still think we can, we're still hearing things in it, and long as we tie this into the COVID, and we think that this is one, long as we can help the health of the people in the rural areas, and long as we can tie that to there, we think we're going to be able to use that for that. And that's what And that's where I'm at right now. I'm not bringing a motion tonight to you because we need to go back to public safety and place Last Cassis into this plan. But I want to tell you upfront, I'll be back here in June again. Yes, sir?
Question, I think that this was mentioned, that the safe room would be available for the members of the community who didn't have shelter could come over during a tornado or...
Yes, the safe room and what the architects tell us, it'd be up to 200 people possibly is what we would have in these. The important thing that they are there for is protection of the communication equipment as well as the staff that we have there. The reason for the safe room that is in there, and we learned this, I guess is what you would say, is from the Putnam County area. These public safety buildings are there. If a tornado does go through, it hits that area, you want the first responders out and be doing first responder things. If they have been hit and they can't get out, they're no good. And that's why this is being built there. This is one of your, your main sources of protection is for those individuals to do that. But yet, it's gonna be the possibility that individuals in that area can also use it too, that can get to it. And, you know, I know that's 200 people, but, you know, that's 200 people that we can look at, and we got six of these. So that can mean a whole lot in different communities. And, and the reason we're saying six like this is the fact that, you know, you have to sit down and say, okay, where do you put these whatever? I hate to say that, hey, okay, I'm out here for Rockvale, I wanna put the one just there for Rockvale. That's not my point. I want as many in Rutherford County as I can to look out for the, Rutherford County as a whole.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Talk about dispatch. How will these be dispatched and will it be separate? And if so, will it put a burden on the current dispatch?
It shouldn't put any more burden on it. It'll operate just like any other fire station or ambulance station that we have there. We have already built this system as we have built it. I think this built, I think the system we've got will understand these systems working. So it shouldn't put any more. It should work well. Chris Gerlach?
Yeah, I might comment on Commissioner Keyes. The system that we've just now beginning to get close to the end of is, has more capacity than we'll utilize in the next 10, 10 years. We could add a dozen or two, we could add hundreds more units and still have capacity with that, that system. But one thing I did note and might wanna take a look at, that's, I feel is important, I did not see in the plan, the emergency generator. And that is critical if it's not already in the plan. It may just not show up on the architect's rendering.
Yes, sir, it's in there.
It is in there.
It's in there.
But that is, an adequate emergency power is critical during a proposed or potential outage, so I just wanted to verify that.
Yes, sir. It's in there. I just didn't go into the individual little items that we do have there, but I'm glad you brought that up. Anyone else? Commissioner Pete?
I've set through a couple presentations on, on these buildings. And by the way, the one out at Kitterell, we'd like to have blue and white, not, not just MTSU, but that's Kitterell's colors also.
Little Blue Devil in there.
Yeah, that's right. That's exactly right. But these, to speak to Commissioner Keyes' question too, these things have a radio tower there, but they're be able to be used as a command center if there was an incident near one of these areas. And say, we were struck by tornadoes and it took down some of our facilities in Murfreesboro, you know, our, our main ones. We could use these for incident command locations. So that's the other part of that plan. And plus, there's a room there for the sheriff's department, I don't know if that was...
Yes, yeah, I did that, so we have, have that up there. You're right. And, and we've also, I spoke with the sheriff about that. These will also become command centers whenever the sheriff is having to go out a situation in a community. This can become the command center for something like that, a lost child or, or anything of that type. These, these become that command center right there. But the important part about this, I think, is the fact it becomes a part of that community. The community recognizes that. You noticed we're not calling the certain, certain, the Kitterell Fire Station or the Rockvale Fire Station or the Amelville Fire Station, we're calling it the public safety. And that's what that will be in that area, and when they see it, that's what they will recognize it. This evening, I asked for the sheriff to be here, and he's brought the deputy sheriff with him, and I've got the EMS director, Carl Hudgens, here, and I've got our public safety director, Chris Clark, and we've got Chief Larry Farley here with us, and he's brought people with him here. You know, the thing about these buildings here, it's not the fire department, it's not the ambulance department, it's not the sheriff's department, it's got all of them there. And it's a place where we're showing unity within these building that it takes them all. And I think that's the thing that pulled us through the pandemic. It was everybody on board, commissioners, it was all of them there. And that's why I asked them to be here tonight when we, I guess what I'm saying, launch this, where everybody can see this is what this is all about. This is about Rutherford County. This is about these individuals, these first responders out here. You know, I know you've, we've mentioned in the budget about the fact of how much raise or whatever, but I think this also shows to these individuals is that, hey, we're thinking about you too. We're looking at a toolbox here for them to work from. Something to work from out there in those communities. Something to start from, something to be proud of and something to be part of. This is not only our county, but it's also our volunteers. They'll be involved in this. They'll be operating out of these too. So it takes us all to get the job done, but I think this is something that, I, I just, you know, y'all saw me walk up here with this book. This book has gone more miles than some of you have. It has ridden with me all over this county, and everywhere I go, I've got people saying, well, here he comes again. I've walked in stores with this. I walked in the Lions Club at Iggleville the other night, and I sat down and I said, let me tell you all about something. And I said, I'm gonna tell you about something that y'all are not gonna get one off, but I want you to see it. And I sat down and I explained it to them and I showed it to them, but I said, I want you to understand something. This is gonna be down the road from you, and it's to back you up. When your ambulance, about that time, it couldn't have been more, it couldn't have been more on cue than anything, an ambulance pulls out of their ambulance station, it takes off. I said, when that ambulance pulls out of this Iggleville station right here, the one at Rockvale is gonna be notified, hey, that's just left, y'all be ready, they may need you in Iggleville. I said, whenever there's a fire down here in Iggleville, that one at Rockvale is, hey, you're, you're ready to go. We don't have to come all the way from Barfield to hip you out, there's just one down the road. That's what this is about, is helping each other. You know, I've got a, I've got a bumper sticker on the back of my window out here in the truck. It says, if you, if you want to be a better, if you want better neighbors, you gotta be a better neighbor. And I think that's what this is all about. We're gonna be better neighbors to the people of Rutherford County. Anybody else got any more questions? I'll see you back in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've, I've got one or two comments to follow up on that. The, we just received the fact sheet, and you'll find in the materials on your desk, you can go in, you can, you can go into U.S. Treasury at your leisure and look at that. What you'll find is some fact sheets, frequently asked questions. Every, every county in the, in the state is getting a tranche of money. We're, we're getting a large amount for Rutherford County. Some 21 cities are getting a tranche of money from the U.S. Treasury. Our 64 million we'll get, once I sign off tomorrow on the contract, then the money will be delivered directly to our trustee, which will be 32 million, and then we'll get the other tranche of money, as the treasury calls it, in January of '22. So six months down the road, we'll get the balance of that. But I urge you to go in and look, there's 151 pages when, when you just type in under the little microscope, interim final rule. The interim final rule is where it explains everything of where the funds can be spent for. Try to get even more clarifying, even though I read it the way I read it, that it can be spent on capital improvements, capital building, public buildings. Still trying to get it even more defined. So I called Brian, who's over, he's the director of the local government division with the Comptroller's Office and Comptroller Mumpower's Office. His, what they are telling people, and we can get Comptroller Mumpower to come down and explain this to us as well, all I gotta do is call him if, if that's the will of this body. But what they're looking for, the treasury, is to provide funding for, not in the rears, but future more pandemics, if you will, other occurrences, because this is probably not the first one we're gonna see. They wanna see how we're gonna spend these dollars for future incidents that come with our community. And if we can start giving vaccinations inside these buildings, and we have our ambulances putting on their mask and putting on their, their gowns and going into people's homes at the next wave that comes, if there is one, let's pray to God there's not, but if there is, that's what the money is being prepared for. Also tonight, we have in the audience with us Brayden Stover. Brayden is the field representative for Senator Bill Haggerty. Talked with him before the meeting, he's back here in the audience with us. He's gonna be working with us to reach out closer to somebody at the U.S. Treasury, because when the call comes in from the U.S. Senator's Office, they're gonna respond faster than they would from some mayor in some product community. So he, he can help us get this more defined as we move forward. But what the chairman asks us to do is we'll go back through and, through his committee and then bring it back to you next month through the committee structure on appropriations of these dollars. So hopefully, we'll have a better definition, and, and I urge you to go in and research that yourself.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I think as you read it, I'm, I'm not, which is what I was, you know, trying to make sure, as you read it, each one of it in your mind of all what was said is to identify the need or the negative impact of COVID. You know, what, what is the problem that you're trying to solve? And then identify how this program building satisfies that need, you know? And you're right, as I, what I wanted to, you know, trying to make it work in my mind, one of the things that during that pandemic was officers or various people who were sick or they had members in their family sick, and where can we put these people so that they could still respond? And I was looking at this, and y'all that have been working on this more diligently than I, are these separate bedrooms? They are, aren't they? So, I mean, one use of...
They are separate.
They look like separate bedrooms.
They're all shaking their heads. Our guys are saying that is correct.
And I know that not all of them are gonna be fully staffed, I mean, it's gonna be volunteer, but that would be the, another reason, you know, what was the need? Well, that during this pandemic was, what do we do with our people who are sick, they're exposed, they don't wanna take their family or, their family is sick?
Quarantine.
How do we quarantine them? This would be a, a great opportunity to say we could use these, we may take a building and say that's where we would house them, because we were looking at apartments and stuff as, you know, in the very beginning, what could we use those funds for? You know, it's, again, it's just thinking, as you read these, and, you know, there's, there's other a myriad of ways to spend the money, but in doing this, it's just keeping in your mind, it's making the justification, and what was the problem with COVID and how do we, how does this solve that problem?
I, I think as we look forward, we, we, what we don't want to happen is to, we spend it and then an auditor comes in from the treasury and going, oh, you owe us 28 million dollars, because that's not how we interpret it. That's not what we want to happen. However, I, I think that if this commission is committed to moving forward and to building all six, if that's what's best for our community, then, then we just go to the bond market and we bond it, all six, without the grant. But I, I think that, that it qualifies based on what, how I read the definition. But we'll, we'll get in that, into that discussion a little deeper at your committee. Mr. Chairman. Any other questions on that? If not, we'll move on to Public Works and Planning Committee. They'll report, Steering Legislative Government Committee. Chairman Harris, you were recognized.
Commissioners, we have our first reading on a resolution adopting the provision of the County Powers Relief Act of 2006, public chapter 953, and to levy a school facilities tax on the privilege of residential development in Rutherford County. I do apologize ahead, this is lengthy, however, we had to read it to be in, in the record. Whereas, the General Assembly in passing the County Powers Relief Act, chapter 953 of the Public Act of 2006, TCA 674-201, 2901, provided authority for counties that qualify under the Act to Levy a Tax on the Privilege of Residential Development. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County finds that Rutherford County is in need of additional source of revenue to offset the demands upon the public school system caused by the population growth experienced by Rutherford County and to help fund capital expenditures for the public school system. Now, therefore being resolved by the Board of the County Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that a school facilities tax be levied in accordance with the following provisions and in accordance with state law as codified in Tennessee Code Annotated Title 67, Chapter 4, Part 29. Section 1, in accordance with the provisions of TCA, Rutherford County hereby levies a tax on the privilege of residential development of property within Rutherford County as defined by TCA 67-4-2903. All terms as used in this resolution shall be defined in accordance with TCA and other applicable provisions of the County Powers Relief Act. The tax shall be levied at a rate of $1 per square foot to be calculated in accordance with the provisions of the County Powers Relief Act. After the tax levied by the resolution becomes affected, such rates shall not be increased for a period of four years in accordance with TCA. The tax shall not apply to those buildings or structures exempt by the provisions of the TCA 67-4-2903. The county building official is hereby directed to notify permit applicants of the liability for this tax and to provide applicants with a form estimating the school facilities tax liability prior to the time of the building permit is issued. The Rutherford County building official is hereby designated as the official employee in Rutherford County responsible for the collection of this tax. The school facilities tax liability shall be paid as follows. Fifty percent shall be paid at the time of application of a building permit, and the remaining 50% shall be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The revenue generated by this tax shall be paid over to the county trustee within 30 days of collection for deposit and of fund or funds designated by majority of the Rutherford County Commission in accordance with TCA 67-42911. Such funds shall be used exclusively for the purpose of funding capital expenditures for education, including the retirement of bonded indebtedness, the need for which is reasonably related to population growth. Any person agreed by the decision of the county building official responsible for administration and collection of this tax may obtain review of the decision by applying to the Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals within 30 days of the decision. If a timely request for a hearing is made by an agreed party, Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals shall, within a reasonable time, follow the request, hold a hearing regarding the complaint of the agreed party. Failure to make the demand for a hearing within the time limit allowed by this resolution shall constitute a waiver of the right to a hearing. After the Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals... After the Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals renders its decision, the agreed party may seek judicial review of the same pursuant to applicable law. If the provisions of this resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstances is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions or applications of this resolution, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application, and to that end, the provisions of this resolution are declared to be several. Be resolved that this resolution shall become effective after its adoption by a two-thirds vote of this legislative body at two consecutive regularly scheduled meetings, and this tax shall be levied beginning on the first day of the month following the second vote, the public welfare requiring it.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion from the chairman, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Johnson. I'll make a comment. I would like to thank Representative Baum, Charlie Baum, and Senator Shane Reeves and probably the rest of our delegation who signed on to this bill that we gave them back in January when the legislative session began. This was our private act, they, they championed it through, went to the governor, it was on his desk and was signed last week, I believe, or week before. But it's, I want to thank those, those representatives for representing our request that came through steering, so. Now, other discussion, comments? Hearing none. Everybody's on, on the board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I have one more personal thing I wanna talk to about. I have been told all my life that I can't do something, from when I was homeless at 16 to 54, being a CEO and a commissioner. I know I come across as arrogant and sometimes a bull. I don't apologize for that, but I know that if somebody unjustly does something to anybody in this body, I know that I would fight and defend. Now, man's word is the most important thing he has, and I give you my word on that. Last Monday, we were in a meeting in the Steering Committee and Commissioner Rather wanted to speak. And I couldn't really understand what he was going there, but I decided that he was attacking the mayor, so I attacked him. I went back and I looked at the thing, at the meeting, and Commissioner Rather wasn't doing that at all. Commissioner Rather is actually giving a vote of confidence. So I wanted to get up in front of all you and I wanted to tell you I sincerely apologize. It's, I'm not a catcher boy. I'm not a good old boy, I ain't a boy anything. But I know that our mayor has done a good job. Whether we like Bill or dislike Bill, we can't say that he hasn't done a good job. And the reason that I'm doing this, which could be, you know, have personal and political effects, so be it. Because I know that when I had a tremendous trauma, and it was a family thing, the man was there for me. I watched him work 15 hours, I seen his wife had to make appointments to see him. I see him getting absolutely torn apart in the press and gets up the next day and has his meeting. I see him saving jobs and working with Carl Hudgens when, when the city wanted to take over their own ambulance. I seen us work together. I seen him be accused of being a republic, I don't even know how to say the word. Thank you. When I watched him in a meeting, destroy him. And I wanted to get up here and I wanted to, to acknowledge him, because I know there's some of us, we love to tear, human nature is to tear you down. Nothing's more important than that. It's tear you down. I, like I said, I try to succeed. I have, I know how I come across, but I wanted to give him credit, because the reason I did is because we had a meeting. I don't agree with Bill on everything, I agree with him on a lot of things, but he's done a good job. And like I said, we need to look at him as that. And I'm sorry I got on the soapbox, I apologize, but it is something I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for those words and thank you for your protest. To Commissioner, it takes a lot. But that's what makes this commission what it is. We're all a team. And when, when you can stand up and publicly say that, that takes a lot. I appreciate that. Members? Yes, sir. Commissioner Rather?
I know we got out of the business, I'm gonna be very brief. I just wanna publicly thank Commissioner Harris. I do know how you come across, and I kinda figured and gathered from a few others, I may not have been real clear, so, you know, part of that's on me, but I appreciate your words. And I wanted, for those of you who didn't watch the committee meeting or I'm sure several heard about it, we're too close to, we've got budgets to work on, we've got some very, very important things. Commissioner Chairman Reed has brought up something I think's very critical of this county, it'll be a tremendous asset to this county and the people in this county. There are so many things that are much more important than deciding who the chairman is. He's still gonna be mayor, but, and we all have to be together, we don't have to all agree, but we run the county. And my goal was, let's worry about this in August, 'cause I think we vote for a chairman in August. Let's decide then and we can decide by vote and nominations. Right now, meanwhile, back at the ranch, let's focus. I think my words were, let's major in the majors and minor in the minors. So, you know, all 21 of us, 22, 23, there's more than just us, there's, there's other people involved in what we do, but it is 21 of us. We, we work for Rutherford County citizens. Let's focus on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next members, we have the, under item LB, we have the one-stop ground lease. Two and a half years ago, when I came into this office, I, I told one of our constitutional officers, Ms. Lisa Crowell, that I would help her find a location. We looked and looked, we got turned down, criticized for looking at the wrong ones and got people stirred up, but we, to show the relationship between the county and the city, and what a good relationship that we have, we were able to find a piece of property the city owned, and the city has leased us that piece of property at the corner of Blaze and Fortress, where their newest fire hall is, and they are gonna lease us that piece of property until December 31st of 2070. So any of you that wanna be here to celebrate that 50 years, more power to you. I hope I, I'm not sure I wanna be here then, you know, but the next 50 years. But anyway, it's coming to fruition and we're excited about it. I know, Lisa, you're excited about it, the architects and everyone is, is excited about this opportunity for her to have a second location on the other side of the interstate, which is almost another city. Commissioner Gooch, we've got almost 40,000 people there, that's more than what Smyrna had just a few years ago. They all love you. Absolutely. And so by doing that, we need to move forward. We, and I wanna thank our county attorney, he worked diligently over the last several nights, working with city attorneys, trying to get this ground lease done, because before the state, the Department of Safety signs off on this, it has to go before the State Building Commission. We're not gonna make the building commission's agenda next week or a week after, but it will be if we approve this tonight. This ground lease with the city, they have to have it in hand at the State Building Commission, because we'll be leasing them an additional 4,000 square feet to put in their, their kiosk for our citizens to not have to share the crowd over on Milton Tennessee Boulevard right now. They're keeping that location, but we'll have a, a lot of kiosks in their location for people to get their license renewed. So it's gonna be kind of a nice complex over in the Blackman area. I'm gonna read this resolution, short, short resolution that Nick has given to me. We, we need passage of this tonight, so we can get it before the City Council next week, next Thursday night. They will have it on their agenda as well, and then it will go to the State Building Commission meeting in June, and then hopefully the architect can start, finally we can say, Lisa, you know, let's dig the dirt, right? Okay. So the resolution, members, is, says, whereas the county and the city of Murfreesboro previously entered into the certain memorandum of understanding on about June 13th, 2019, regarding a ground lease for the certain property for county offices on city property, and whereas the property is located at the northwest corner of Blaze Drive and Fortress Boulevard and will be used to provide office space for the county clerk, the Tennessee Department of Safety, and an additional space being shelved for future use, temporarily being called the one-stop building. Whereas the city and county now desire to enter into a ground lease for the property of the one-stop building, a copy of which is attached here too under Exhibit 1, and whereas attached here to Exhibit 2 is a copy of the master plan of the property that depicts the lot to be leased by the county for the one-stop building, as well as a possible future building of other city-owned property adjoining the said leased lot. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and hereby authorized to execute the ground lease with the city of Murfreesboro and other corresponding documents referenced in the same, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, incorporated herein by reference as set forth herein at lengthy verbatim, subject to review or approval by the county attorney and the county engineer, resolved this 13th day of May 2021. Is there a motion? I have a motion for approval. Is there a second? A second, Commissioner P. Any discussion or objection? Seeing none, you're on the board, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, may do so now. Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Members back up under, other business under contract with Energy, Land and Infrastructure, that was bumped and, and so we have a meeting with them next Monday. We'll be sitting down discussing at some additions to look at that, so we'll be meeting with their representative next week. So that brings us to the last item, statements and announcements on your agenda tonight. Commissioner, no, no ham breakfast?
There will not be a ham breakfast this coming Saturday. The next one will be in August and I don't have the date on that one yet, but I'd be assured I will remind you.
All right. Other statements and announcements? Commissioner Reed?
Just to remind everyone that this is National Police Week.
Thank you for your service.
And that Saturday is Peace Officer Memorial Day, to remember and salute this nation's fallen officers who have paid the ultimate sacrifice to protect their citizens and their communities.
Absolutely. Let's, let's thank all of our, our first responders, police officers, for everything that they do, for putting their life on the line. We, we honor and respect them. Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
Thank you. I just wanna remind everybody that the joint meeting with the School Board, Budget and Health and Ed will be on May 25th at 5:30. The location change has happened and we're gonna have it in this building and not at Rutherford County Schools. So since the education is about 75% of our overall budget, I always encourage everybody to come. It is a health and ed meeting, the only folks who will be voting that night are health and ed, but we do encourage any commissioner, budget, school board, anybody who wants to come on those committees and ask questions, you're welcome to come and you'll be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, and just make sure you made note of that we sent out a correction of the venue yesterday, and, and so it will be here on that, that night. Other? Commissioner Gammun?
I just wanna make a special request to this commission, the body, anybody listening. I've got a very dear friend who's my neighbor, known him over 20 years, and I went over today and gave him a kiss on the forehead. He's got liver cancer and it came on him in the past couple of weeks.
Oh, no.
And he's not gonna make it, I'm in hospice, he's coming over, so I'm asking for your prayers for Roger Chilton, his wife Dawn, and his family.
We'll, we'll all lift him, lift him up and be with him and his family. Other statements and announcements? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.